Hello Saints and Patriots, Apostle Clay Verti Kamau Imani with Raging Elephants Radio dot com, the rebellious voice of Texas liberty. And once again, welcome to another conversation of Texas nationalist movement's Legislative Action Workshop. I've lost count on how many conversations this has been since a couple of Fridays ago, but it's been extremely busy, chock full of information that you need to be a more effective liberty patriot warrior, rebellious patriot here in the Lone Star State. Great, great guest for tonight, Dr. Matt Robinson, who's with the State Board of Education, District Seven. Before we get to Dr. Robinson, just a couple of reminders. First, as you take your seat in the video conference room this evening, you'll notice at the bottom of your device screen, there is a Q and A button, and we'll be watching that throughout the hour to see if you would like to pose any questions to Dr. Matt Robinson, or others, myself, or maybe over the mothership in Nederland. We'll be watching that. Also, there's a chat room button right next to that Q and A button. If you want to interact with your other conference attendees, that's how you do it. And we'll be keeping an eye on that one as well, in case you pose some questions or interesting comments, responses to Dr. Matt Robinson's observations tonight. Still have a couple more sessions left. You still want to go to tnm.me/tnmlaw. That's tnm.me/tnmlaw for Legislative Action Workshop. To sign up and reserve your seat, by now you know how it goes. There is an individual, unique link created for every conference room, and that will be delivered to your email inbox once you reserve your seat. Any of the future conversations that we have, for instance, with Jonathan Stickland on January the 3rd, you have to go to tnm.me/tnmlaw and sign up to reserve your conference room seat. You want to do that as quickly as possible. Seats are limited, even digitally. If you have missed any of the conversations that we've enjoyed over the last couple of weeks, you want to go to tnm.me/tnmlaw and look right there, top of the screen, big red button. You can watch all the videos that are posted there, you can share them, you can lift clips. But by all means, share the information that has been harvested with this Legislative Action Workshop. It's been absolute platinum, and use those videos to your advantage. Share them with as many people as possible. If you want to cut up some of the clips, edit them and send them out, points that you think are very poignant to share with other patriots, do that without hesitation. In fact, we're encouraging you to do that. And to keep up with Texas news, information, commentary from a liberty perspective, we openly are transparent about our bias. Download the RER app, the Raging Elephants Radio app. You can find it in your app store and Google Play absolutely, totally free. One thing about the Texas network is that those big talkers you listen to in the afternoon, they may know national stuff, but they can't talk Texas like we do. Download the Raging Elephants Radio app, RER app, find it in your app store and in Google Play. Dr. Matt Robinson, how are you?
I'm good. Good to be here tonight.
It looks like you're kind of doing a, are we doing a home tour? Is the house for sale?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my charger up here and running.
Dr. Matt Robinson, member of SBOE. Let's start there, Matt. State Board of Education districts are rather large. They encompass a whole bunch of counties. Why don't you give us an outline of what your district looks like? District number seven.
Yeah, it's, gosh, it's a big area. It starts over at Fort Bend County and includes all of Galveston County, Brazoria County, Chambers, Liberty, Jefferson, and all the way over to Toledo Bend Reservoir area.
It sounds like a big U.
It's a big chunk. It's all, pretty much all of southeast Texas, and then all the way over to Fort Bend.
It sounds like a big J or something, but you don't have any Harris County at all?
No, no Harris County. Basically, it's kind of the southern side and the southwest, but no, none of Harris County.
And how long have you been in office, Matt?
Well, I just won here recently. So in other words, I will take office here next month.
Okay, so you're newly elected, because I'm looking here at District Seven, and you actually won by pretty much 20 points.
Yeah, it was, we did okay.
I would say so, winning by 20 points.
Yeah, it's interesting, because Fort Bend County is in my district, and that, most Republicans didn't do well in Fort Bend County.
Well, most Republicans didn't do well statewide. Maybe you should make a comment or two on why you think that is, and you were able to do so well.
Well, I think a lot of it is being able to understand what people want, you know, and certainly education is a very important issue. And, you know, my particular bias, well, my viewpoint is that we just need to get kids educated in the appropriate way, and not something that's, you know, sometimes things that have been done in the past can continue to be done in the present and the future. In other words, when it comes to education, you don't necessarily need to make radical changes in how kids are taught. If something was successful, you know, 20 or 30 years ago, for example, in terms of techniques, you know, like with technology, obviously, kids these days are going to be using, you know, they've got computer devices in their hands all the time, and so that's a big part of how they learn. But, you know, it doesn't mean that, you know, still, things like actual books still have value, and just generally speaking, just teaching techniques, not all of them need to be radically changed. You know, the Common Core thing comes to mind, that was brought up about 10 years ago, or, yeah, it was about 10 years ago or less. You know, that's an example of how that was going to be a pretty significant change in how kids were taught in terms of curriculum and how they were taught. It didn't necessarily need to happen, you know.
Well, you know, I would imagine you know of what you speak. You were a member of the Friendswood Independent School District on their Board of Education for about a decade.
Yeah, I was on the Friendswood ISD Board for 10 years, and then, you know, I did this, I did education, kind of a learning program that we went throughout Texas for about a year to different places to see examples of how things should be done, and I saw some examples of how things shouldn't be done. And I was a hard, it was a hard lesson to see how a lot of the districts in Texas are not, you know, and not as fortunate as Friendswood, and I knew that was the case, but, you know, it goes to, you want to make sure that kids in all locales get, have good educations, and they don't always necessarily get that. And certainly, the textbooks have a big, a big part of that. At least that's where the SBOE comes in, in terms of the content of the textbooks, is at least something that we can have an impact on.
Yeah, the role of the SBOE and the state of education in Texas, and how Washington is impacting that here in Texas, is something that I hope we have the time to address. I really want to do that. The title of our conversation, Matt, is Protecting Our Culture: Why the State Board of Education Matters. One of the things that I say consistently on Raging Elephants Radio, well, we're not shy about calling what's happening on the southern border an invasion. That's what it is, in our point of view, in our review. For fiscal year 2018, according to the Department of Homeland Security Statistics on their website, there were 250,000 apprehensions of invaders just on the five border sectors of Texas for FY 2018. That's October 1 of 2017 to September 30 of 2018. And National Border Council, Border Patrol Council, has said that it's a 50-50 proposition, so that if we caught 250, that means 250 got away, that's a half a million, that potentially, approximately, have invaded just into Texas in a 12-month fiscal year. That's an invasion. There was 156,000 that invaded on D-Day, combined allied forces that hit the beaches of Normandy, and at the height of both surges in Iraq and Afghanistan, the total number of US forces in theater was 250,000. So, we call this an invasion, and we always say that the purpose of invasion is conquest, to control your government, your economy, and your culture. And that's what we're talking about tonight. They want to, the invader wants to change your government, the invader wants to change your economy, and the invader wants to change your culture, and that's happening right before our very eyes on a daily basis, and it's because of what's going on on the border, and has been happening now for decades. The culture is changing. I think there is an impact, not just from the national centralized control of Washington Devil City, but what's happening on the border and how it's impacting our classrooms, our institutions of higher learning. Just from a 30,000-foot view, before we drill down into the micro of the issue, what do you think about that theory that I've just put before you? Our observations, our belief system here at Raging Elephants Radio. Do you concur, or do you have a different point of view, Dr. Matt Robinson?
Well, I think that, you know, that we are a nation of immigrants. We all know that, we acknowledge that, that's a good thing. But what's happening here in the last 20 years is very different than what, than how immigrants came from Asia or Europe. It's obviously much easier to get over, to get here, first of all, much easier. And then, and then when you, unlike previously, there's too much of a tendency now to, when they come over, to, you know, to kind of want to stick with their language and culture, as opposed to kind of blending and become part of the melting pot.
Well, it seems like, there seems to be an aversion to assimilation. I mean, it's almost, I can't say on a daily basis, but a weekly basis. I mean, I can give you all types of anecdotal examples of how just having a conversation, just trying to be amicable with another, what you think is a citizen, and they can't speak a link, like English, this is somebody who's middle-aged, obviously, a Spanish extract, but it has an impact that, it seems as if there is an aversion in this new invasion community to assimilation. You mentioned previous waves of immigrants, legal immigrants into the nation, actually invited by the nation, especially from the European countries, to come in and help with the workforce and grow the population, grow the taxing base. This was a very different approach, and it's had, what I believe is a deleterious impact on our culture. It's become bifurcated. The language, you know, is, you know, you lose that unity if you don't have the assimilation, and like previous waves of immigrants, this wave of invaders seems not to want to be American. They just want to bring Honduras, Guatemala, Nicaragua, Mexico, Colombia, Venezuela into Texas, or the United States generally. That's my observation. I don't think it's xenophobic, I think it's real. Matt?
Yeah, it's a concern, and, you know, the thing too, is that we can't take everybody from the Third World in our country, and it, there's just a limit. We can't take everybody. And there does seem to be an attitude that, that if they, if they come from the Third World, if they can get here, then they automatically get to come here and stay. So, we just, you know, we don't have the resources to do that. And then, like I said before, you know, in the past, it's always been, when you come here, you're expected to make your own way, that the deal has been, you know, you're now in a country that has great opportunities, economic opportunities, and what have you, political opportunities, freedom, free from repression where you left, but, but your end of the bargain is that you make your own way, and that not that, the day that you get here, or the next week, you know, you get welfare benefits, or you get Medicaid, or you, you get all this stuff. I mean, that's not how, that's not been the history of our deal that the United States, America's had with immigrants. And so, I think you're right in that there is a, and there's also a tendency on people that, some politicians that are here, that want to encourage more of that, so they can change the makeup to their benefit. So I think you have enablers here in the states that want to have these people come and not really assimilate, you know.
Well, talk, talk to the culture aspect of it and education, because that's, that's the intersection that I want you to discuss, and we're here to hear you.
Yeah.
Comment on, is the intersection. Let me give you an example, Matt. I've walked into schools, especially elementary schools, middle school, and it seems that the dominant language is Spanish. I've walked into schools, and usually, if you walk into a store, or a doctor's office or something, the signs may be bilingual. You walk into a restaurant, the signs may be bilingual, but there's acknowledgement that English is the dominant language, and usually, that's the first language that you see is English. However, I've walked into, onto campuses, and it seems as if the dominant language is Spanish, that English is, that English is, is not the first language. It is indeed the second language, and the signage on the campuses are in Spanish.
Right.
This is right here in Houston, okay? This is what I mean by an impact on the culture, and in other ways that we'll, we'll broach during the conversation, but specifically, when it comes to assimilation, and what is going on on the campuses and in the classrooms, even in the composition of a faculty, a campus faculty, or administration. I think there is an impact, a large impact, on, on those aspects because of what's going on with the border invasion, and it has had, and it pretends, an attitude, or to me, demonstrates an attitude against assimilation, and these are the type of anecdotal anecdotes that I can share that say, assimilation is a problem, education isn't helping, and the cultural deterioration, traditional culture of Texas is deteriorating, deteriorating, and it's happening through education, it's happening through our children, and the invasion has something to do with it. Am I making sense to you, Matt?
Yeah, one of the, one of the ways that that's, what you're talking about specifically, is that a lot of the school districts, they, they don't, they don't press children to learn English quickly. And I've always made the point, being on a school board, that, you know, that, especially as a child, you know, children can learn a foreign language a lot quicker than adults. And so, in elementary and middle school levels, I mean, one year at most, should they have anything that amounts to bilingual stuff? And in other words, after a year, they should not, in other words, we should not have kids in, you know, bilingual stuff, and trying to talk to them in Spanish, just year, year in and year out, but that's not what goes on. Too much of the time, the districts will allow kids, they don't press them, in other words, they don't put any pressure on them to learn English within a year. And so, that costs, that costs, that costs money, and then that, you know, that drain on the money that helps, that could otherwise help, you know, native-born kids to do other, you know, other options for them. It drains the resources from them. So, this is a, what you're talking about intersects in terms of the resources that the districts are using to an excess regarding kids that can't speak English.
I think the assimilation question is so, so very important. You made the comment earlier, I don't think anyone in this conference room, or anyone who is a member of the Texas nationalist movement, or for that matter, I don't know of any, any single individual that's against immigration, that's against legal immigration. I think we all recognize the importance of it, that we actually have to have it. We have to have legal immigration, but it must be controlled. The first role of government is to stop chaos, and when you have a border invasion like we do here in Texas, that's exactly what's going on. It's chaos, and, you know, the president is spending 1.4 trillion dollars on beefing up, retooling our military, and we're being conquered by toddlers with dirty diapers at the border. And it is impacting our culture, and education, our faith are at the center of our culture. And you're with the SBOE, and I wanted your comments about this intersection of economy, of national security, border security, and what's going on in generations to come. The whole anchor baby thing, the DACA recipients, the Dreamers, it's all in education, and Texas is in the heart of it. It seems like all the legal battles happen here on all of these issues. There's a bill that's being presented, already been filed to deal with the Dreamers in the 2019 legislative session. All of this has to do with education, to some extent, the SBOE, but as one with long tenure in the education field, especially governance, I think it's important to have your thoughts on this, Matt Robinson.
Well, I just, I think that, you know, the, if you don't have the assimilation, then you're gonna, you're gonna start to seriously undermine who we are as a country, and then what that means is we, we will lose our prominence, we will lose who we are, you know, there are other countries in the world, Canada comes to mind. You know, Canada, they have, you know, Quebec, we don't want, you know, Quebec, they speak predominantly French, but the supposed national language of Canada is English. And every so often, Quebec is trying to have an independence movement, because, you know, they don't see themselves as Canadian, they identify more with the French.
Yeah, we were, we were fortunate to have Jake Provencier as one of the presenters of the Legislative Action Workshop, TNI Legislative Action Workshop, and boy, did we get an education on Quebec, and this is precisely what we don't want to happen here.
That could happen in Texas, yeah.
It could happen in Texas. I mean, think about this. I mean, when you watch the Canadian Parliament in Ottawa, or any, any public event in Canada, you know, you gotta do one paragraph in English and one paragraph in French, French, French Canadian, you gotta do one, the next paragraph in English, and the next paragraph in French Canadian. I mean, it's, you know, it's a madness that the people of Quebec seem to have, just seem to have accepted it, that at least that's what Jake seems to say, but when you talk about cultural damage, changing the norms of the nation, the traditions of the nation, I'm more troubled, Matt, about changing the norms, the traditions, the belief system of us here in Texas, more than anything else. If we lose the unique identity that we have, we truly, as, as a unique culture, as a unique society, are in trouble, and I think this is what causes us to wipe the sweat off our brow in worry around here, more than anything else that's happening out of Washington. Your thoughts, Matt?
Well, I mean, Texas is a unique place in all the United States, and...
The world, the planet. There's no place like this place on the planet, in all the universe, and we should have, we've embraced it in the past, and I don't want that to disappear because of American nationalism and the double impact, the double whammy pincer movement of the southern border invasion.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we, it is a unique place, that, and that right there by itself needs to be taught to the kids, you know, and about how, how we have been, how we have become great, you know, what, the specific history of Texas, and as it relates to that, you know, we, whoever contributed to that, they need to be mentioned in the textbooks, but if you, if you didn't contribute to it, then you don't need to be mentioned just because, you know, you happen to have a Hispanic surname, and you had a minor role, but you, you get mentioned in a major capacity. But, the, basically, we need to, we need to make sure the kids growing up, that through our education system in Texas, are taught how unique Texas is, the, you know, the sense of independence, I mean, the, because we started, we were our own nation. I'm not sure how many kids, you know, really know that. I mean, and I know they take a Texas history class in the seventh grade, but, you know, I would like to make sure, I would like to look at that textbook once it comes around, make sure it teaches kids the uniqueness of Texas, and I'm not, I'm not sure that it, that it does. And certainly, as, as these new waves, or waves of immigrants are coming in, they obviously don't know or appreciate that. And so, it makes, it creates a big problem in Texas, because we don't have, we're not our own nation, so we cannot control the border the way we would like to. And so, the least that we can do in things like the SBOE is to make sure that, at least that kids are taught in the schools, the uniqueness of Texas, the traits that we have that made it where we're our own nation, that made us so successful, and even though today, we're not our own nation, I mean, there's so many people around the country that move here, and, you know, there, it's not just the jobs, there's a sense of, you know, prosperity and a sense of optimism, and...
It's the way of life. It's the way of life.
Yes, it is, and the least that we...
A Christ-centered, still a Christ-centered culture. I mean, some sense, you know, not doing our best to beat back the neo-morality movement. That is appreciated by others in other states where they've already had to surrender to those movements.
Yeah, and the education, at least the education of the kids is something that we can, that we can control.
Good segue, Dr. Matt Robinson, of State Board of Education, District Number Seven. Here's a question in the chat room, Steve from Bryan. The question to you, from your perspective, what was behind the attempt to change the curriculum related to the Alamo? We've had a lot of controversy, a lot of conversation about the Alamo over the last many years, and especially as heated up over the last four to six years. And we've seen an attempt to change the narrative about the Alamo and what it means, whether it is influencers who are globalist, or even those that are stationed here in Texas that could be labeled radical leftist, and they want to change the narrative, the real story about the Alamo, to something that's completely corrupted. Was there an attempt to do that through the Department of, through the devices of education, through the SBOE, through the textbooks? What's the story behind that, Matt? I know you just got elected to the SBOE, but you were involved with Friendswood ISD. You know education, or you're familiar with those attempts to do that?
Yeah, well, I am indirectly, you know, that, that attempt came from the Texas Education Agency, the TEA, and, you know, it, I don't know, I suspect that there were probably, you know, there are people that are kind of work behind the scenes, that have a kind of unspoken agenda, and I think that the, there were individuals at least, that, maybe not everybody involved in that, but several people at least, that were trying to de-emphasize the Alamo. Okay, so, you know, the, if you de-emphasize the Alamo, you're basically de-emphasizing the uniqueness of Texas, and that's kind of the, that really kind of starts at the beginning and the heart of it. So if you de-emphasize that, then it, if your kids are going to be taught that, you know, the Alamo wasn't that big a deal, therefore, Texas not that big a deal.
It's like trying to de-emphasize Pearl Harbor, or D-Day, or Bunker Hill, or Yorktown, or Shiloh, or Gettysburg. How do you de-emphasize the Alamo?
Well...
But they try, right?
Opposite direction, if anything, right. I mean, it needs to be emphasized even a greater degree. And again, you know, I don't know about, there was a specific group of people, but I think they were probably individuals involved in that, that that was their, that was their goal, to, you know, which is what we need to be mindful of and stop, and stop from happening.
Well, can the SBOE do that? Can the SBOE actually stop it? Because from my pedestrian view of things, from the way, way on the outside of the education community, and certainly way on the outside of the workings of the SBOE, but it seems from my pedestrian view, that a lot of... that a lot of power has either been involuntarily stripped from the SBOE or perhaps even voluntarily stripped from the SBOE. Perhaps what has happened with the SBOE is an acquiescence or an abdication of constitutional powers to other forces, uh, like the lobbyists within the legislature. If the lobbyists can't get to the board members of the SBOE, perhaps they can be more successful with state reps and senators under the pink dome. Um, what kind of power do the SBOE have to stop the cultural assaults that are happening to Texas through education?
Now, at least with the textbooks, the, uh, the SBOE still has, that's probably the main area where they still have significant power. What, what you mentioned though, referred to is the legislature has, in the last several sessions, tried to take away power from the SBOE, uh, because, you know, they want to have more sale of education than they already have. But at least with the textbooks, that is something we still have purview over. And, and that, that de-emphasizing the Alamo, that did come from bureaucrats in the TEA. But State Board of Education members at the meeting back in September, and then again in November, they squashed that and said, no, that's, we're not gonna put up with that. So, but I think it, it, it's mindful, it, SBOE members have to be mindful of watching very closely. And a lot of times we need help, uh, from, from people like members of the T N M, you know, in terms of going over, there's a lot of content in these textbooks. Um, fortunately, that was something that somebody picked up on early on. But as long as we pick up on this stuff, then we can, we can nip it in the bud in terms of the con, the content of the textbooks.
Okay, so that brings up another sticky issue, Matt. And that is, when you speak about de-emphasizing, the, the disappearance of textbooks from the classroom. And once again, this connects with what power really remains for the State Board of Education here in Texas. One of the things that we follow closely here at Regent Olympus Radio are the efforts of what we call Big Education, Big Ed. The centralization, um, of education, uh, the C-scope, the Common Core, the change of the mission statement from reading, writing, arithmetic, to attitudes, values, beliefs, and behavior, the standards, even trying to get those standards um steadfastly rooted in the homeschool movement, so that homeschooling is no different than whether your child is sitting in a government's classroom or not. The standards and the curriculum, the material, still is going to be the same. And there has been a seminal change in what's being taught, there's been a seminal change in how it's being taught to digital. Uh, many children don't even have textbooks anymore, especially at the high school level. They, you know, when I was, when you and I, I'm sure, were going to school, um, I brought my, it was mandated by my parents. I basically brought all of my textbooks home from school every night. I had to hit them, I had to study them every single night. Well, that's gone. And, and it seems, may, maybe you can explain how this new digital learning and this data harvesting that's taking place with our children, this concentration of attitudes, values, beliefs, and behavior, once again, is moving influence away from the elected officials, namely you, who's about to be sworn in the office. Can you impact that? When you say, "We want to be a bulwark against the cultural assault on the belief systems and values and traditions of Texas, we want to continue um inculcating our children with those things that made us a great and unique culture." Can you really do it now from the SBOE? Isn't the TEA and Betsy DeVos and Department of Education and other influences such as, you know, Bill and Melinda Gates and, uh, um, you know, Jeb Bush and other big proponents of digital learning, aren't they having more of an impact on what, what's happening with children in Texas than our very own SBOE elected officials?
Yeah, that, that's true. Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, that's true. And the other, the other problem, um, is that of, of these approved textbooks we're talking about, that the State Board of Education, the OKs, probably a third of the districts statewide don't even use those. And so what, all they're required to do is to say that what we are using is in compliance with the TEES, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Standards. And that, um, they just have to certify that, that they're in compliance. And then if they are, that, that certification's okayed by the TEA, then they can use just about whatever they want. So that, that's a big loophole right there. And that's, those one-thirds of districts that, that do what they want, those are the bigger districts. Those are your.
In the, in the urban areas and in those collar counties, in the big, the big Texas Big Six, that would be Harris, Travis, Bear, Dallas, Terre. Huh?
It's also the suburb, the big suburban district.
The collar, the collar counties as well, such as what, what you find in Montgomery County, Fort Worth, Collins, what you find in Johnson County, Hayes County, Williamson County, you got problems in Fort Bend.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's a problem. And then, um, but you know, like you said, it's, you know, back to the digital, I mean, you know, some of that, you know, I think all, what we should strive for is a blend. Um, in other words, you're not gonna get, even as adults now, everything.
Well, I like the blend, I mean, no, no, I don't, I don't want the blend. I don't want anything that, whatever Bill, I, I mean, I just saw an interview with Bill Gates the other day talking about this, and it made my, it made my stomach turn, this global control of education, okay? Um, but is it possible? I don't mind the digital learning if the content within the digital is something comparable, if not identical, to what you have approved as the elected officials of the SBOE. And that, i- is there some way that you guys can jawbone or, um, you know, strong arm the pink dome to say, okay, fine, you want to bring digital learning in, but it has to be what's been approved. The curriculum has to be identical. What's on those iPads, what's on those laptops has to be what's in those textbooks. That's what we want, that's what the people of Texas wants, want. We have no interest in what Mark Zuckerberg wants our children to learn.
Well, that, that has to come from the legislature. So they would have to pass a law that says that, that these, these are the prescribed textbooks, you can, you can put them on, electronic form is fine, but this, this is the content that we want in these textbooks. And again, right now, uh, you have a third of our kid, a third of the districts, which probably represent more than half of our kids statewide, to be honest with you, because these are the bigger districts, um, that are not used in these prescribed textbooks. So in order to change.
Are they still making the purchase? Are they still making the purchase of these textbooks, Matt? Because one of the reasons that the SBOE had all this impact and influence on national education was because of the size of the purchase, the largest.
Yes.
purchasers of textbooks, uh, in the country. And, um, are they still making these purchases and just, you know, throwing them, you know, in the fire furnace somewhere, in the fireplace somewhere? What are they doing?
Well, it depends, of course, it's, you know, they, they purchased some of the books, but not all of them. So in other words, for example, Fort Bend ISD, you know, they might purchase a third or half of these prescribed textbooks. Um, you know, but, but two-thirds of districts, that's all they use. But then of those thirds of districts I'm referring to, they'll use some of these prescribed.
A third of the districts, but a half of the enrolled students.
Right, right. And, you know, obviously, it's enough that the publishing companies, you know, the Texas, um, the Texas districts buy up enough of these, of these textbooks that, and then plus that a lot of the states across the country, you know, the publishing companies, they look at what the Texas, um, the SBOE in Texas does in terms of prescribed books, and the one in California. And, and there's basically two sets of textbooks nationwide. And they do the ones from Texas to the red states, and one from California to the blue state.
Of course.
So that's how that works. But, but no, you're right. I mean, it's a good point. Because if your kid goes to Fort Bend ISD or Katy ISD, Cyfair ISD, um, you know, a good number of those books are not, are gonna be ones that that district just picked out of thin air. And, and supposedly they're in line with the TEES, but the content could be, you know, so that's a loophole that the legislature can close.
Um, is there some way that, well, first of all, when it comes to SBOE, we've got a question from David in Frankston, um, wanting to know the role citizens play on the decisions of the SBOE. Uh, uh, it, does it operate like the legislature? Do you guys take public testimony? Do you have hearings where the public can participate and, and express their opinion on different subject matters?
Um, yes, we do. Matter of fact, each meeting, there's a public hearing part and public testimony.
How many districts are there, SBOE districts, Matt?
Fifteen.
Okay.
Fifteen.
And you guys meet in Austin, uh, how, what's the regularity of the meetings?
We meet in Austin five times a year. And they, it's for about, almost a week. It's like about, um, usually four days. It starts on a Tuesday, goes through a Friday. The first week, the first meeting of the year is the last week of January. It starts like the 28th or 29th of January. But ahead of time, like a week ahead of time, you can sign up on the TA's website to testify. And the, the agenda will be posted probably at least two weeks ahead of time. Uh, but yes, there is a public comment section and, and you can sign up to testify.
Do you feel, now, you're, you're gonna be newly sworn in, uh, in January, but I, do you have a sense of public participation previously on these, on these issues, this issue of education and culture in the state and, and the impact of the SBOE?
Well, I think from what I've seen, um, there's probably not enough testimony from people like us. Um, there is a lot of testimony from, um, you know, from teachers that are, that have been picked by the TEA a lot of times um, to come and testify. They kind of back up and support what the TA is wanting to do. Um, and not to say that I would disagree with all those teachers all the time, but a lot of times their viewpoint might be different. And, um, you know, so I think that it would be helpful to have more people sign up to testify. Um, that would identify with, you know, with the type of priorities, Texas culture priorities that are taught in our textbook. That would be helpful.
I have a question from Flo in the Q and A box. Um, and I want to remind the participants, if you have a question for Dr. Matt Robinson of the State Board of Education, just click that Q and A button at the bottom of your device screen. I'm unfamiliar, Matt, with Colonel Roy White and a coalition called Truth in Texas Textbooks Coalition. Um, have you heard of Colonel White and Truth in Texas Textbooks? Do they have any impact on what's happening with the SBOE? This is from Flo.
Yeah, I have, I have heard of him. Matter of fact, he's gonna be at a meeting in Sugar Land in January. I think, uh, one of the groups, uh, are gonna have him over there, and so I'm gonna plan on going to hear him talk. Heard of him, but I don't know that, I don't know a lot about him though.
Um, when an SBOE meeting is happening, how, how rabid are education lobbyists in talking to you guys? I, I mean, I've, I've, I've heard that, you know, they can fill up the committee room, the boardroom, um, just like if you walk into a committee room under the pink dome and you know which ones are the lobbyists, buy their loafers and their, um, reptile skin cowboy boots, I guess. And, uh, does the same thing happen at the SBOE or you guys? I, I, I have a feeling that when textbook decision time comes, it's, it's sort of a, a mosh pit around the boardroom, but does that kind of thing go on? I mean, it, it goes on in, in other aspects of Texas government. I'm just, I'm just curious to know, are those pressures applied to the SBOE board members as well?
You know, I, I don't know for sure, Clayber. I, I, I think it does though, because I've not been on it yet. But from the meetings I've been to, what I've seen, uh, and some people that have already reached out to me that are, that are lobbyists, um, you know, I, I think that, that, that probably does, that probably does go on. Um, I, I just don't know the extent to which it does, you know, I'll be finding out shortly, I guess.
Yeah, well, as one of the, as one of the biggest expenditures right there with healthcare, when it comes to the $200 billion plus spend in Texas per budget, it's a lot of, it's a lot of cheesecake. It's a lot of cheddar out there. Uh, and so there's gotta be.
Some interest, yeah.
Yeah, there's have to be an industry put behind it when you got that much cheddar out there floating around. Um, I don't know if you're able to comment on this, but there is, I, I want to try to pose this question to you for, for Larry, on behalf of Larry, who's in Seguin. Can you comment on the funding controversy related to the GLO, the General Land Office, and George P. Bush? Is there a connection? Can you, can you comment on that?
Yeah, from what I understand, that was, uh, kind of a power grab that George P. Bush did. Um, he wanted to try to, you know, take some of the money that's, that's been given to the State Board of Education to pay for textbooks, and wanted to keep that for himself so that he could kind of make himself look better in terms of, uh, you know, here I am giving money to education and, uh, but basically.
I don't, I don't, I don't understand the scheme. He wanted, wait, I don't understand the scheme. He, he wanted.
GLO had the money.
GLO had money, okay.
Yeah, they, what, the way it's, it has to do with oil and gas, um, um, you know, royalties. They would come to the GLO and the GLO would just, you know, basically, the money just went directly to the GLO. And the GLO has always handed that over to the State Board of Education, which they doled out to pay, to the district to pay for textbooks, okay? So that's how it's been done for, I don't know, forever, a long time. And so he, he decided he was gonna stop that, and he was gonna hand out the money directly to the districts. So is it, basically, it's a power grab on the part of him, uh, to try to make himself look, I don't know, maybe he was trying to ingratiate himself with, with, I don't know, districts or parents and make, so that he could look like Santa Claus or something. I, I'm not sure.
Uh, anything dealing with education and the Bush family, I'm very uncomfortable with. Uh, if George P. Bush is doing anything with textbooks, uh, with his father being one of the biggest proponents of digital learning and Common Core, um, it, it's always gonna smell fishy to me, Matt. And I, I, I'm sorry to be cynical on that, but the facts are the facts and the connections are there. And the apple hasn't fallen far from the tree as far as George P. and Jeb is concerned, from my point of view, uh, my opinion. Uh, so if, if George P. is doing anything with textbooks and anything doing, anything inside the classroom and, and the education of our children, I, I, I would be worried, and I am.
Especially if it, if it's a change in what's been done in the past, yeah.
And, and so one last question here, um, the assault on Texas history, I want to revisit that. It's not just the Alamo, is it?
No.
It, it really is, it really is, they really are a, a attacking the purpose of Texas, the reason it was started. Um, attacking the cultural roots of it, et cetera, et cetera. It's more than just the Alamo. We focus on the Alamo, and rightly so. But it's the whole Texas story, the whole Texas narrative, um, it, it, it's being attacked. And once again, that, that links back to the subject matter of this conversation, our culture, our uniqueness, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, Texas is, um, you know, we, probably more so than any other state in the U.S., have a real sense of, of independence as a, in, in the general sense. In other words, you know, the, you come here and you, you make your own way. Um, you know, things, things are gonna be tough at the beginning, but you make your own way and you, you know, you, you provide it for your family and just that general sense of that independent streak as a person.
And, and other states and peoples realize that. They understand that that is a trait of Texans, period, in collective.
Right, and that's why people have come here, because they, they heard of that and said, you know, that, I like that idea. So we have attracted, over the decades, over the last hundred years, 150 years, we attracted people like that. We need to keep that. We need to keep that sense of that, and I'll use the word libertarian for lack of a better word, but it's basically just an independent streak, um, and it has self-reliance, that's another key word, you know, I mean, um. Um, and it has self-reliance, that's another key word, you know, I mean, um, and, and self-reliance has to do, you know, with, with your own family making their way, and you, and you're part of your own community, as opposed to, um, having, relying excessively on local government or state government to provide for you.
The upcoming legislative session and your first meeting, what are you anticipating? 2019 is coming up, that, that is the talk. Education bills are being filed. Is there anything that you've got your eye on so far? Just focused on getting acclimated to your new position is, is enough for your plate right now?
Yeah, it, um, you know, I think that, of course, they're looking at the, the school finance. And I think that we need to get away from, you know, the education being funded so excessively by property taxes. I mean, um, we really need to, to get away from that. But when, when they're getting down into the details of this, it would be nice if they get a little more specific with the districts in terms of how they spend their money. Uh, as I mentioned before, a lot of, of this, from being on the school board, a lot of resources, too much resources, really go into year after year paying for the bilingual education of kids. So, you know, I think that the legislature is going to need to be a little more specific in how the money is spent. And, and then they do need to get away from reliance on property taxes, and maybe find a different source, whether it's sales taxes, but, but, uh, those are the two things that I think that, um, that we need to be talking to our legislators about. But, but I go back to, you know, in terms of how the district's spending their money and, and how that intersects with assimilation of the immigrants. And I just, it bothers me when I see kids, especially elementary school kids, that year after year, they're in the bilingual education program, and they can still barely speak English. That shouldn't be happening.
Dr. Matt Robinson, uh, one last thing, since we're talking culture, with this session coming up, will you be keeping an eye on bills filed that could easily be recognized as culture changers? May not necessarily have a role specifically in what happens within the classroom, but could have an impact on education if it's, if it's impacting culture, it's impacting education and vice versa. They're interlinked, they're inextricably linked. Will you be watching action on those types of issues as well? Let, let me give an example. Just not one way or the other, how you feel about it, but the possibility of the bathroom issue coming up again, because we've seen those battles, the battlefield be in, on the government school campus. We've seen the fights in Hayes County, in Terrence County, here in, in Harris County, uh, in Flugerville and Austin ISD and other places, where the battlefield is actually on the campuses, in every aspect of culture. Will you be watching those things as well, since our conversation tonight centers around culture? Dr. Matt Robinson, your final thoughts?
Yeah, I definitely will, I definitely will. And I'll need, you know, I'll be looking out for it, and I'll rely on, on people like y'all to, to help me, uh, be aware of things that come about. You know, I, I, there's members of the ledge that I know well, you know, Larry Taylor and Greg Bonin and Mace Middleton, and, um, you know, people like that, that, uh, that I'll be in communication with. But yes, I will be looking out on, on for bills that, um, that do intersect with, you know, Texas culture and maintaining our, you know, how we, how we want our kids taught and how their environment that they're in.
It's a, a huge portion of who we are, talking about education. And it's something that we talk about almost every week here on Raging Elephants Radio. Um, and the fact that Daniel and the Texas nationalist movement would want to put a, um, a spotlight on a portion of the government here in Texas that a lot of people doesn't even know, doesn't even, don't even know that it exists. The State Board of Education was, was brilliant and greatly appreciated. Dr. Matt Robinson, how can folks get in contact with you if they have any further questions? Or if they would like to interact with you about educational matters as you take your oath of office next month?
Yeah, I have, um, my email address is, uh, mrobinson0903@netzero.net. I will be having a, a, a new email address starting next month. It's through the SBOE. And, uh, you know, people can call myself, but I, I do, I have a cell phone you can call. And I might not get back with you right away, but it's, uh, it's 281-635-1962. And I welcome to have input from people, especially as the, these, uh, meeting, you know, the meeting later in January comes about.
Dr. Matt Robinson, congratulations on your election to the State Board of Education for District Seven, uh, won by 20 points back on November 6, 2018. That's, that's a nice margin, uh, in keeping in mind what happened in other parts of the state, even statewide. Congratulations, we'll be watching your work, your liberty-driven, liberty-minded work at the SBOE, and I'm sure that we'll be greatly appreciative of what you do for protecting our culture, educating our children, and making sure the story of Texas truly is told truthfully. Thanks a lot, Matt, really appreciate it, man.
Thank you.
Saints and patriots, I want to thank you again for joining the Texas nationalist movement this evening, and another session of the Legislative Action Workshop. I think the next one is scheduled, confirmed, scheduled for January 3 with State Representative Jonathan "The Big Stick" Sticklin, speaking of one who escaped by the skin of his teeth back on November the 6th. Now, he's going to be talking about the speaker's position. As you know, State Representative Dennis Bonin, currently the Speaker Pro Tem, has been selected apparently by the Republican Caucus to be the nominee for the caucus. Legislative session happens on January the 8th. That'll be the first order of business, Dennis Bonin being the presumptive, presumptive New Texas Speaker of the House. And we'll be talking with The Big Stick about that. If you want to reserve your seat for that, you know the drill. tnm.me/tnmlaw, L-A-W for Legislative Action Workshop. Reserve your seat for the video conference there. You'll get a unique link to join that particular conference room. For any of the conversations that we've had during the Legislative Action Workshop, go to the website, once again, tnm.me/tnmlaw. You'll see the big red button right there for videos. Feel free, in fact, we encourage you to share those videos through all platforms that you have access to. If you want to chop up some clips, send them out, feel free to do that. If you want to send out the whole conversation, feel free to do that. When it comes to Texas news and information, Raging Elephants Radio is the rebellious voice of Texas liberty, your Texas network trusted news, information, and commentary. 24/7, 365, Texas, and nothing but Texas. Raging Elephants Radio app is the way you want to go. Download it, the RER app at your app store and Google Play, or go to ragingelephantsradio.com and sign up for our email. That way, we beat the censorship. The big tech companies can't stop us from informing and educating you. Thanks so much, once again, for joining us. Watch your inbox for the next Legislative Action Workshop conversation. It's been a pleasure being your moderator and host. Thanks to everybody in the mothership over in Nederland at the TNM HQ. I'm Apostle Claver T. Kamal Imani, the Christian politician, your ultra-conservative soul brother. My enemies under the pink dome call me the purifier, purifier, and I like it. From Houston, may the Lord Jesus bless you. May the Lord Jesus bless the future independent sovereign republic of Texas.